I'm gonna call this meeting to order, actually this workshop to order I should call it. This workshop was duly advertised on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I don't even know where we're starting at this point. I guess, Dan, you can start.
Got it. Okay, last month, there was a workshop and at that meeting Supervisor Casiola presented a draft of the mixed-use district ordinance. We also discussed some general changes to the U D O, just to update some things. And we also talked about changes to the zoning map based upon some suggested areas from the comprehensive plan. So what I thought I'd do is just open it up to the, on the mixed-use district, the additional ordinance and just ask the board, I got this out almost two weeks ago, if anybody had any questions, additions, or wanted to go over anything related to that.
I mean, as I said to you, Dan, like, I think we need to have Gretchen review this. So this is an ordinance change and while it appears to me that it matches what was written and nobody commented on, I still want to have Gretchen review it to make sure. Any other comments or questions? It hasn't changed at all from the last meeting.
Yes, I have some to mention. I'm trying to find the definition. The first one I saw, what I got in line was with the accessory living structure. I can't find it on what you just gave me here.
It's in the, it's in the general ordinance updates, Tom.
This is, okay, it's in this packet, not in this one, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
That's the second, yeah, that's the second one.
Under section two, it's the first definition, accessory dwelling unit. We had talked about that, having a good definition of that because a dwelling unit in a, on a lot could be either attached or detached. And so Gateway came up with a good definition for it, but we don't address it anywhere in the ordinance. So I think Jack sent something out to us this morning just for us to think about. Should accessory dwelling units only be allowed in R one because they're bigger lots? Or should just attached, I mean detached dwellings, structures be allowed in R one? And maybe allow deep or attached living units in R two or P R Ds? Because those are smaller lots. So a smaller lot, you probably wouldn't have room for to put in detached living quarters in like a, they call it a granny flat, or we know it as a mother-in-law suite. So we have to think about that, that we can differentiate between an attached mother-in-law suite and a detached mother-in-law suite.
Well, I mean, I think it depends on the size.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. First of all, it should be conditional use. We just don't address it at all. We have a definition now, but nowhere in the ordinance do we talk about it. So my, my suggestion was there'd be a conditional use if somebody wants to build a mother-in-law suite on their property. But we still have to have some standards, like if it's going to be detached, which is a separate building, do we only want that in R one, or would we allow it in R two based on the size of the lot? Now, we know-
We already talked about that last meeting. We said it depends on lot size.
Right, but I'm just saying, we have to address it in the ordinance itself, somewhere. Like say it's a permitted use in, I mean, a conditional use in R one, then that covers it all. Then you can have some standards through, through the conditional use.
I think it has to be a conditional use period.
Right, I'm just saying that, but would we allow a detached living mother-in-law suite in a P R D? Considering there was asked for those tiny lots.
But not all P R-
Well, no, no, you don't, you can have a living suite on your property as long as it's accessory. That's why it's called an accessory dwelling unit. It's known as a mother-in-law suite or a granny flat. Say, say in my backyard, I wanted to build something for my mother-in-law to live in it. That's, that's not unusual. That's, that's not out of the ordinary for good planning, but we just don't address it at all. So if my, if I'm in R one, I should maybe have a choice whether I want to make it attached to my house on the back or have it detached. But if I'm in a P R D lot-
How could it be detached as a separate living area?
Well, that's common. That's, that might be even more common than a attached.
In a P R D?
No, no.
Right.
Right, not in a P R D. That's what I'm saying. Should they be allowed in P R Ds? And it should only be allowed as they can attach?
I appreciate, and there will be time for a public comment, but whoever keeps yelling out, can you please stop?
P R Ds are, they're historically smaller lots, obviously. And yet, if somebody wants to attach it on the back of their house, maybe it should be acceptable to have an attached mother-in-law suite to the house. But to allow it in a backyard, considering all those lots are so small, that would probably be unreasonable to the neighbors to have a detached structure, a living suite. Because you also need access to it, like for a driveway, or, I mean, I don't know if you need a driveway or not. If your lot's big enough, you might put your own separate driveway so they can have a car back there.
I don't think it matters whether it's R one, R two, or P R D because, like, in R one, you could still have a small lot. Like, it's not usual, but it's still possible. Like, you could lit, you could be in an R one zone and only have a quarter acre-
No, no, it's only, they're minimum half acres.
That's why I said a half acre.
Oh, okay, I thought you said a quarter acre.
Like, you could have a half acre lot, which you wouldn't want if you have a half acre, if I have a half acre and he has a half acre and they're right next to each other, I doubt, like, somebody's gonna want, that's what, I don't think you can do it based on zoning. I think it has to be conditional use based on lot size regardless of zoning.
All right, well, then it has to say that under R one, it has to say conditional uses a accessory dwelling unit. And then under R two, it has to say conditional use accessory dwelling unit. And P R Ds, accessory dwelling unit. And then, then it's strictly negotiated based on the size of the lot or whatever else we want to apply to for a conditional use.
Why didn't you?
Any idea what you decide, what requirements and everything?
But we don't have any side, we haven't established anything yet. That's what I'm saying. It's not addressed.
Like, again, this is the same thing that I brought up to you last meeting. Is it ten fifteen this morning, we got all these emails with all this stuff. We had a month. But, not the stuff from Dan. Dan's was sent out beginning of June. But, like, with these suggested changes, I don't know. Like, I need to sit down and think about it.
Again, it's not a change. It's just something we haven't addressed yet. So we have to put it somewhere. And I don't disagree that it should be conditional use. So the simple thing is to, under all those, those zones, just say it's a conditional use, period.
Yeah, Tom, that's the way it's written. All accessory dwelling units shall be allowed in any residential zoning district as a conditional use. And as such, is subject to the following requirements of four oh three conditional uses.
Oh, so it says all, all residential zones?
Yes. Yeah. An accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed in any residential zoning district as a conditional use.
All right. Should we have some criteria, like Maron mentioned about side setbacks and things like that? Should it be the same as a shed?
They're gonna be the same, they're gonna be the same as any, any setback would be required for any other accessory structure.
Well, that was just my question. We allow sheds right against the ten feet from a property line. So an accessory structure where somebody's living could be ten foot?
Unless it's-
Is that good planning? That's just, just a question.
I, I mean, it should be, I, I think you should, accessory structures should probably observe the same side yards as would be required for the primary structure, wouldn't you?
Okay, we have to say that somewhere, right?
Okay, well, that's an addition we can make. That's no problem.
And the other thing is whether it's an on-lot system or-
I'm sorry, we gotta read here. All accessory dwelling units shall comply with the area involved regulations of the zoning district, which the accessory dwelling unit is located. And then we can just add on to that and say, in the accessory structure, if used as a living unit, comply with the primary structure side yards, you know, we'll figure out some language for that.
Ron, you think that's fair?
I think I'm committing to this temporarily. I need a minute to, like, think about that and, like, think about what you're saying before we say or we're writing that in. And again, I want to encourage Gretchen to review this.
Okay, another thing, though, is we talked about, or we need to talk about, if it's an on-lot septic system or a public sewer. Obviously, public sewers, there's no issues. But if I have a septic system on my lot and I want to put a mother-in-law structure in the back, I'm gonna naturally want to tie into my own little septic, my own existing septic system. So is it gonna be good enough, or the system good enough to handle another, like, an occupied building?
Well, Tom, I would, I would interpret that as another, that's a, that's a planning, that's a planning module question. That's like another additional E D U being added to the, to the property. So it would have to go to the sewage council if there was a, if there was a system on there. And they would have to determine whether the system is big enough to handle the additional dwelling unit.
And then if it's public sewers, then there's no issue.
Not an issue. They just have to maybe pay another tap fee, that's all.
So we should say that, though, right? I mean, it-
Why do we need to say that? It's understood with sewage, correct? Like, you, you, that's what you do when you have sewage.
That's a typical, yeah. It's in, it's in the ordinance already. You have to have sewage. But, I mean, we could call that out. We can make it clear.
All right.
Yeah, we could, Matt, we'll add that to the conditions. So I have Matt here taking notes for me.
All right, that's all I had on those, on what you gave us, Dan.
Okay. Then I was just, just the third item that we looked at and everybody's, everybody's interested in is the projected changes to the zoning map. I gave the, I gave the board eleven-by-seventeens and the changes, and there's a map here. If the public wants to actually see it, I'm sorry, I don't have an easel, but if you want to come up and see it afterwards, it's up on the screen, too. So the, the three areas that we talked about changing, very simply, in South Point, we talked about adding, putting an addition on to the S D district. And this is going from R one to S D. So this gold continues to be gold. In the area up around what we'll call, I'll just call it the Kowski property, what we talked about was making that I one. And then we talked about a buffer between the I one and the school. And I just took a shot at that in this segment. I'll just talk very loudly. So they, if the, in around the Kowski property, we talked about the blue area becoming all industrial. And then this salmon-colored area, it would be mixed-use commercial by the buffer between the school and the industrial zone property. That was just my take on that. I mean, if somebody else thinks there should be a different designation here or this should remain residential or some other use, that's, that's a change. And then the most significant change would be to adopt all of the zoning up along Rising Road to be more in line with what the comprehensive plan suggested, given the highway location. So all of the salmon area is mixed-use commercial for the, for the comprehensive plan land use map. The yellow area is mixed-use residential. You'll see that in three different locations. And then finally, the last piece, this, this green piece right in here in the middle is already R two. That's the, that's the Silver Creek development that's already there and entitled. So that's the three major changes to the map. So as Cindy said, probably the next step, if, please, if there's any comments on the map or want to look at it in depth, let me know.
Well, I do have one more suggestion, too. Obviously, we're looking at areas that can develop quickly, that have sewer capacity available or nearby, water on the property. I don't know how long it'll take to, to see it extending out towards Rising Road. That's, to me, it could be in the near future. I think the only one that it would, could happen more immediately for us, for our tax base is that Muse A B B property. But there's also a big tract that I looked at. It's a hundred ninety-eight acres. It's the old Weaver Town Farm off of nine eighty that goes around the bend. The owner has frontage on Route fifty through lots that he owns, and he owns a lot of frontage on nine eighty. There's, there's a sewer line, a manhole within two thousand feet of that property. So, I mean, that, if that sewer line was extended, and I think it was Mr. Fuchs talked about extending it. I think he has some right-ofways already. He actually has one from the township already to run it through our property. He has, it's pending that he actually runs the sewer line.
So the, whoa, so this green area on the map where my cursor is, is the municipal building. The pink area is the park. And, I'm not, sorry, part of the pink area is, the green area is the municipal building and the park, I'm sorry. The pink area is commercial on the existing map.
Right there, that's-
I believe this is Mr. Fuchs' farm right here.
Right. That has frontage on fifty and nine eighty. The sewer line, manhole's two thousand feet away from that.
Yeah, which is about right there.
Like I said, I mean, I think he's capable of extending a sewer line. So, I mean, not only would it give us a mixed-use commercial right there, it would open up all that property to other development.
Why would we make that mixed-use commercial?
Well, as opposed to, it's residential right now. It's unlikely that that's gonna help us much as in residential.
I'm not saying leave it residential, but why wouldn't you make it, like, why mixed-use commercial?
So we can have some commercial development there?
But why not? That's what I'm saying. Why not make it commercial?
I guess we can run a-
I'm hesitant, I'll be honest. I'm hesitant for this mixed-use commercial based on some things that have happened over the past couple months with, like, I'll be, there's a bar in the area of a residential area and it's causing quite a problem for the neighbors. And when you start having lots of mixed-use commercial, that's what you're gonna have. You're gonna have-
No, that's wrong. Mixed use doesn't mean it's gonna be mixed with commercial, I mean, with residential. It's still its own sep- separate area. Mixed-use commercial, you're not gonna have any residential in there. Just like you're not gonna have any mixed use-
The definition allows for it.
I, well, I'm saying, a property owner can choose that on their, their particular piece of property. But there's not gonna be an individual bar in the middle of a, in a residential mixed use.
How could you prevent that?
In, in a mixed-use residential, you can't have, it's only gonna be residential in a mixed-use residential. The, the mixed-use commercial-
No.
Yeah, no, the mixed-use commercial is gonna be generally commercial. A property owner has a right-
Then why not call it commercial? What's the difference between mixed-use commercial and commercial?
The mixed-use commercial is generally gonna be commercial, but a property owner will have a right. If he wants to bring a developer in there that wants to do residential, then he's putting his development in, in, in a mixed-use commercial area. It's all mild uses.
That's exactly what I'm saying, though, Tom. So if I'm the owner of the property in a mixed-use commercial and I decide to bring a developer in and put people, put a residential development in the middle of a mixed-use commercial, and then those residents get upset because they didn't realize the impact of living in the middle of a commercial zone, who are they coming to? They're coming to us. They're standing at that podium and screaming and yelling because it's too loud and it's too this and it's too that. Like, when you mix up zoning classifications like that, you're just asking for a headache.
Nobody's gonna come in and sell to a developer if it's a small piece and expect the rest of the property around him to become residential.
You can't say that. You can't guarantee that.
Well, no, I don't know who's gonna do that, though. I mean, nobody develops that way anymore. Because he, his was residential. He asked to be turned to commercial. This is already commercial.
There's no difference. There's no difference, Tom. If you have-
There's a big difference.
If you have a residential neighborhood in your mixed-use commercial because Joe Smith, or whatever his name is, sold his development, and then the next adjacent property owner who's also mixed-use commercial goes in and sells his to a whiskey distillery, and people get mad because it's right next to their development, who are they coming to? Us.
South Point is a mixed-use development, has residential, commercial, and industrial. Ironwood, those people, they have commercial next to them, directly across from them. Same thing with the, what's the residential part townhouses?
Fairway Landings.
Yeah, Fairways Landings.
And then all the piano is right above it.
S D is mixed-use. It has commercial. So if you don't want to be around any commercial, you're not gonna buy in Fairways Landings.
Buy it. It's, it's, I feel that if it's commercial, or whatever, and people want to decide to come in and build after they already have commercial there, well, you know, they gotta do their homework. If they don't want, if they don't want to have commercial in their backyard, well-
But what if it's the other way around?
Be, do your homework before you buy the property to put, put a home on it or whatever if it's gonna be sold to residential.
What if it's the other way around? What if the residential's there first and then they want to add commercial?
Well, then that's, that's something that the residential people will just say, you know what? We won't, we won't, we don't want them there. But-
You can't stop them if it's zoned that way. What's gonna happen is we're gonna have a packed meeting room. That's what, you exactly proved my point. If I'm the first property owner in my mixed-use commercial development to sell it and I sell to a developer who puts in, you know, a housing plan or whatever's gonna go there, apartments, whatever, and then somebody else wants to put a shopping center in next door, those people come here and scream and yell at us. We have to allow it.
There's no shopping centers. It's, it's a, it's compatible to residential. That's the point.
So what would you consider?
Burnside, okay. He is doing something. There's a, there's a serious contractor up there. He's been up there for a long time. It's been industrial.
But it hasn't impacted them yet.
But you, you buy, if you buy in that-
Those hogs came after him, being-
Right. That was industrial since before I was on the board, even.
I, look, you're saying, like, the def, it's like, commercial that's like residential. Give me an example of commercial that's like residential.
I never see you use those words. I said it's compatible. I said it's compatible with these commercials that are listed.
Okay, so give me an example.
There's a whole list. I'll read them off to you if you want.
I have them here.
All right.
Contractors office, contractors yard. Wait, wrong one, wrong one, wrong one.
Isn't it this one here?
Well, that's a chart, that's the chart of it.
Yeah, it's a chart of them. I've been listing a whole list of them.
Mixed-use commercial.
Where's she at?
Farm, single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling. Sorry, not on my glasses on. Community residential facility, court adjudicated home, daycare home. Accessory dwelling unit. Well, that can't be because we're saying it's a conditional use. Well, these are all conditional uses, but. Financial institution, post office. Daycare center, public building excluding sanitarium and correctional facility, community center, club, lodge, or fraternal organization, house of worship, bakery, bicycle shop, business service, apparel and clothing, art music, photography studio. Sorry, I'm gonna be here all night. Catering service, convenience store, candy or ice cream shop, coin-operated laundry, craft or hobby shop, drinking establishment, dry cleaning store, eating establishment, florist, excluding greenhouse, food store including supermarket, food store, funeral home not including crematorium, furniture home, furnishings, hardware, general retail merchandise, gift shop, book or stationery store, cards, antiques, cosmetics, candy, tobacco flowers, greenhouse kennel, newsstand, personal service, pharmacy.
You're not reading any in the right place.
Yes, I am.
Cindy, are you reading in the ordinance or the?
Yeah, you're, look at this one. Did you give everybody copies tonight also?
I'm looking at this, this-
You're not looking at the right thing. You have to look on the commercial mixed-use district.
In the ordinance itself, because they were pared down.
So what is this?
That's just a checklist. That's a checklist for the-
That was included in the packet that we got.
Were you reading under the P's or permitted under a mixed use?
Yeah.
I don't know that we got this.
Where did that come from?
Uh, I don't know, this should have been-
We got everything from Jack, so I have no idea where anything came from.
Yeah, this is the, this is the ordinance, and, and those were pared down, and some of them are conditional uses.
Who pared them down?
That was part of the draft.
Do you have more questions to this?
I have it. I have the ordinance.
All right, it's, it's the draft that has to do with the ordinance itself. All right, yeah, start right there. The residential has to be a twenty-five acre tract. I'm not gonna just take my half acre lot and put a candy shop right there in the middle of, in my half acre lot.
Huh?
Everything that you gave me on the night.
You can't say that.
So what, you want to read the list to everybody now?
Sure. Farms, subject to section twelve oh nine agricultural regulations, single-family residential development, master plan development only. Minimum tracks or parcel size of twenty-five acres shall be subject to the regulation of R two district. A fifty-foot perimeter buffer easement shall be provided along property lines with the exception of a twenty-five-foot perimeter buffer easement, art music, or-
Wait, wait, stop. That area up there by the residential came from our highway overlay district where that developer, Sabatino, he has some areas that are big tracts, but it's residential and some is commercial. So it's, it's a, it would only be a big tract if somebody in that mixed use, if they, like, twenty-five acres or more.
It's misleading, like, when you look at the map and we, when you look at the map and then you look at this, they don't match. Show me where you can have a, a mixed-use commercial zone where somebody has twenty-five plus acres.
I just told you, the, Sabatino.
Are you gonna let me finish?
You just asked that question, Sabatino.
I wasn't done.
All right.
Where there's twenty-five acres next to somebody else who has twenty-five or more acres, you're misleading people because you're making it, you're basically making a free-for-all zone. You're basically-
That's absolutely baloney. Jeez.
You're basically saying you can have whatever you want. You're saying you can have a single-family or residential development, but you can also have commercial. What? What did you say, Darlene? Darlene, what did you say?
It gets to be a circus here, rather than just listening to what Tom has to say. And then at that point in time, instead of keep interrupting, let him go through this map and let's get something done. I mean, I'm, it's tiring, three, three meetings already and people aren't showing up because it's like a free-for-all here. That's why Frank's not here today. No, he's not working.
He is working.
Yeah, I know, but he also told me he wasn't, he didn't want to attend last month's meeting either. And the reason he was, came last month's meeting is because you said that you weren't gonna come. And we needed him to be the vice chair to run the meeting. And that's why he came last meeting.
Well, he told me that you told them all these people were coming and nobody showed up. That's why he said.
So I'm gonna prove you wrong publicly because I'm done with you bashing me when you don't know what you're talking about. So.
I don't care what he told you on the phone. I'll tell you what he told me. I'll tell you what he told me in person on Friday night.
I'm, he's not even here to defend himself and I-
I knew he wasn't gonna be here today. I knew that Friday.
I, I, it's not competition. I knew that, too.
Let Tom finish this meeting, please. Let's get something done. You want to continue, Tom?
Do you think residential should be completely on the mixed-use commercial? And that, that's what our planning commission came up with and our steering committee came up with. What was the question? Do you think residential-
Am I allowed to talk? I mean, she's saying that I'm interrupting you. I'm not at all, but-
Just answer his question, yes or no.
Do you underst-
Let him be in charge.
This workshop, this workshop is over. I'm gonna ask again that we be presented with this information in the future so that we have, in advance, not in the future, of this meeting so that we have the opportunity to review it and we're not being blindsided. No, I do not think residential should be included in mixed-use commercial.
That is for two weeks.
I responded to everything.
That's for two weeks.
I called you last Thursday. I text you and I called you last Thursday to ask a question about this.
Because you don't understand something. It doesn't mean it's like you're planning good zoning.
What do you mean, I don't understand something?
Can't understand this, the, the compatible uses. That's the purpose of a mixed use, the compatible uses.
You just want to go through and make the entire township mixed use because you're trying to appease voters.
There's only-
That's not good planning, Tom.
There's only three little sections here right now that's that. It's, we're looking at.
There's more than three little sections.
One of them is the mixed-use zone. One's industrial and the other is a business B P D.
Say it, because I'll get yelled at.
We're not, she's not even, that property's not under discussion. Hers is off- We're not, she's not even under, that property's not under discussion. Hers is off of Shafani Road. No, we're, we're only looking at these three parcels along Racing Road, which is mixed-use.
If it's Elizabeth's property, it's gonna change.
If, if it's mixed-use, some of them will be mixed-use residential, some of them is mixed-use commercial. That's the proposal, that's the proposal that was passed a long time ago. We're not even looking at that. We have, uh, industrial, the, the SD, uh, for South Point, we have a piece that's-
Why these properties, like, why would we not, go ahead?
Cause they have public sewers available, water close by. Those are gonna be our first tax base hit.
But we haven't even finished the comprehensive plan, we haven't even finished the de-
Comprehensive plan's been done.
We haven't even finished the definition of mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential, and you wanna go ahead and change the zoning.
That's, that's why we're here for this work session. Dan gave it two weeks ago, did I work on it? It's been two weeks ago, did you read it at the end of last week?
I did read it.
All right, but then, so why would we delay it again? Make some comments on it then.
I was trying.
All right, you made a new comment that it shouldn't have a commercial in it.
No, it shouldn't have residential in it.
I mean, residential with a commercial.
That's not a new comment, Tom.
Okay, but that's completely, blows off what our co- uh, steering committee did and our planning commission did.
But I don't understand, they're two separate things. Before we get to looking at these specific areas, we need to write the definitions of mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential, and agree to that. We haven't done that. We haven't done that, Tom.
I know, because you kept saying this, this councilor postponed a meeting, cause I didn't have enough time to look at it.
That is not true, we're sitting here to-
This one we had for two weeks now.
I called you last week, did you call me back?
I talked to you several times last week.
I called you last Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, did you call me back?
For what?
To talk about the definitions of this.
That wasn't what you told me you called me about.
That's what I was calling you about, Tom, you didn't answer the phone, how do you know what I-
That wasn't what you told me, what you texted me, what you wanted to talk about.
That was separate, and I just asked you a question if you talked to Gretchen about something else yet. Did you return any of the three phone calls from last week?
Yes, but it wasn't about these.
You did not, you were bold-faced lying, you did not return the phone call.
I can't talk about what you called me about, because it's a personnel issue, and I won't.
It's not a personnel issue. She's not a personnel, oh, she doesn't, she's not a staff member.
Okay, you know I'm not gonna get into the personnel matter for the meeting.
That's not why I called you. I'm the one that texted Jack King and said, "We still don't have anything," on what, Friday?
You had it for two weeks.
I am talking about the definitions, I had no idea-
You, you, you just didn't read it.
I have no-
That's why you're just bouncing another button, you still won't read it, that's what I'm saying.
Go ahead, Dan. Go ahead, Dan, you, you can move forward without me.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
There's, that, that's, that's all, that's all that, that was, that presented was the, that we talked about, the, uh, we presented the mixed-use ordinance, we presented the proposed areas that were discussed about change in zoning, and we presented the updates to the union. So, Tom's on, actually.
We didn't ask you to move forward, that's all we needed.
That's, that's what I, I think we accomplished, it was that much. Unless there's any other questions?
Well, I made that suggestion too, about that property on, off nine eighty. It looks like it could be ripe for development.
Along nine eighty, ten percent?
Yes, that Weaver Town property.
Oh, you mean on fifty?
Yeah, that's the only other property. It's the only other property I see that has potential to develop quickly for us, so. So, you wanna, you wanna consider that too? I'm not saying tonight, I'm just saying you wanna-
It's up to, it's up to the board. We're not gonna board on it.
I think we should.
Ron?
Main, main road is pretty easy.
I know, that's, that's, and the sewer line is closer than probably Racing Road, it's probably, that probably could be the second place that develops after that Muse property from Koski.
He already has a permit for one of them.
So, do you agree that that should be?
A- a- and, um, it opens up other property there to develop. We need, we need some developer who's gonna ex- expand, extend the sewer line. Our municipal authority doesn't extend any sewer lines to, for developed property, that'd depend on, uh, some developer. Same thing with that property on Muse Bishop Road, the, the sewer line ends right on the other s- on the, uh, west side of the Monfort Trail Bridge, that's where the last manhole is. If anybody develops up towards, uh, like, like, um, um, the Yago property, some developers are gonna have to run that line. The sewer authority is never gonna run it. And if a developer doesn't do it, then those people along Puma Road, they'll never have sewers. And individual homeowners aren't gonna run a sewer line for their own little street, it takes a developer to do it. So, a hundred, two-hundred acre property, not only could it, uh, actually increase our tax base pretty quickly, but it opens up property for somebody else who couldn't, uh, uh, extend the sewer line on their own.
And it just, nevermind.
So, I'm just saying, we have, there's four spots now that could develop, that'd help us quickly. So, we had to consider that fourth spot also. So, I'm, I'm not telling, you don't have to make a decision now, I'm just saying something-
We can't make a decision, it's a-
We could make a decision now, because-
I don't make a decision to vote.
We can't make a decision now, it's a workshop.
No, not vote, but we could make a decision saying, hey, you know what? We need to look at this, and also for, uh, commercial.
I guess we could consider that.
Cause we need more commercial in Cecil Township.
Right, and I think, uh, that was your suggestion, Cindy, was it, you want to follow up on that?
Follow up on what?
That it could be commercial instead of even the mixed-use?
Yes. It makes no sense to me-
Would you, would you, tell them that?
To make that mixed-use commercial.
With Fuchs? With, with this in here, with Fuchs, this commercial?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
All right.
That's all I was trying to say.
What?
You're going through and you're giving everything the categorization of mixed-use commercial without really taking a look at whether it makes sense to me.
We have it here, though.
The, the, the comprehensive planning committee did that, alls I was looking at, when they decided it should be mixed-use, I just looked at areas that are ripe for development quicker. I didn't make up any of these, uh, mixed-use areas, none of them.
You made up the definition of mixed-use commercial, it does not currently exist in Cecil Township.
I helped write that, and, and we had, our, our engineering expert, our, our planning guy, write it for us. I, I don't, I don't know how to write all these preambles to it. And I told them that. I just wrote up the, the, the compatible uses with, in, in a mixed-use commercial. But I didn't come up with any of those properties, not Elizabeth's, not John Yago's, not that stuff on nine eighty. Alls I did is took the map that the, we were given, that we finally approved, and I looked at ones that are ripe for development today. And there was only three areas, and now there's a fourth area, that's all I'm talking about. I didn't make up any of these.
There's a good example of mixed-use commercial. Right at the end of Racetrack Road. Okay, right above that big commercial development, right behind it is all the homes, right behind it. They don't have to go very far for a, a gallon of milk, a loaf of bread, or if they wanna go and have themselves a drink at a bar. It's right there at the end of, why can't we have something like that here?
I don't think it's fair, they, they had the, the racetrack and the Me- Meadows Casino to develop around. That, that was a magnet for that, if residential would be able to next to it.
Right, but then, right, the residential is above the casino and-
The commercial was drawn by the casino.
Right.
And then maybe residential were drawn next. We don't have a big draw.
Well, maybe with Mr. Fuchs, we could get a heck of a draw.
Ri- right, that, that could be a draw too, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's ripe for development. But, uh, you understand, I didn't make any of these zones like this.
I didn't say you did.
I, I just think the way that, that at least Tom pu- Tom put the skeleton of the structure together on it, and, and I did, I did like the way that he separated, when you look at it, again, uh, between the work on the state roads and the non-state roads, remember we had that discussion? And that's why we sort of came up with a mixed-use commercial and a mixed-use residential was, that the residential stuff, we would try to steer that more to the, to the roads that don't have the capability to handle all the development, and the other uses would be steered towards the state roads and the main collector roads. So, that's kinda where the uses are broken now, so I think that, 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 that makes sense. And, and I, I will just say, I, I, it's hard for me to keep my mouth shut, because mixed-use development is, i- e- everybody wants that now, because development, I mean, unless you get straight residential, which, which, you know, does the township want more straight residential?
No.
It's good to have property that, that can be developed in, in a variety of ways. The key is making sure that you don't do it in the wrong places, and I think that's the concern of some of the board, I understand that completely. So, you know, maybe studying the map a little bit more and making sure the definitions are right, but that's a good thing to do.
And I wanna point out one more thing with that, uh, um, interstate highway overlay district that Sabatino's doing us, doing. None of us are happy that he put those tracts of residential in there. We, we thought it was too valuable of a, of a property to, uh, surround an interstate with more residential like that. We wished all that would've been commercial, but he was, e- even if we changed that now, on that, uh, ordinance for the, uh, interstate highway overlap district, we change it now, he's still in, I mean, we can't pull that back off him, cause he already submitted for residential in there, I'm not sure we should pull it out of there.
You're making my point exactly.
What is it?
That he's taking a commercial z- z- zone, and he's smack, and he's putting residential smack in the middle of it. And you and I both agree that we wish that wasn't there, that it doesn't make sense where he has it, and, but we can't do anything about it. That's exactly what I-
It's, it's, it's all considered compatible, I'm just saying, uh, we, it's an interstate, we, I would rarely see a tax-based commercial there at that interstate. Out here on nine eighty, there's no interstate, we gotta hope something develops that's good, and, and I, I like the idea of it being commercial, cause that's connected, that's more than a mixed-use commercial, mixed-use is kinda mild, but that's why it's compatible with residential. And you're the one who even suggested that, on, on, uh, the property, Sh- Shafani Road, you said nobody's gonna build out there, you know, nobody's gonna put any businesses out there. And we followed up on that, and all that area is now re- uh, mixed-use residential. I'm not saying it was just your idea, but you brought that up, and now it's all mixed-use residential. So, there won't be any commercial, even if somebody wanted to, on all along Shafani Road there, because ma- maybe it was your suggestion-
Okay, but Elizabeth Collins' property borders nine eighty.
That part is still mixed-use commercial. But all along, like Cindy said, the, the township road, like this little road like Shafani Road, nobody's business is gonna go there. She, there, it's, it's, it's mixed-use residential on there, there's no mixed-use commercial there.
That's my point, though, with you.
Always afraid to ask for a more serious use. We need more industrial, but where are we gonna, where are we gonna get it? The only thing we ever have is, you know, mining town areas that-
We're adding more resi- or, more industrial right now for the ABV property.
Right, that's our proposal right now. That's on the map here.
Right.
And that's gonna be the first to develop. So, yeah, it's hard to get industrial. That's our best tax base, doesn't have any, doesn't use any police services, and it doesn't use any, uh, police for the school. We don't have to handle any money, most of the roads inside there are developed. That's ideal, but it's hard to get industrial. So, I'm glad we got this little piece here. But that's the only piece I see.
You are so all over the place, that it's, like, this is part of the reason nobody can fol- follow what's going on. Because you're, one minute you're talking about Weaver Town, the next minute you're talking about industrial over here. We have to do one thing in a town. We have to formulate the definitions, which I understand you're saying, I didn't read, I did read. They are yours, you wrote them, regardless of whether you're gonna sit here and say it right now. Sure, Dan wrote them into an ordinance form, but they're your suggestions, I can send you the stuff that's at Weaver Town. My point when I was talking about mixed-use commercial was specifically related to Weaver Town. It's, it's perfect for commercial. So, you're sitting here saying, we shouldn't, w- we need more commercial, we need more industrial, then why give them the opportunity to make that another residential zone?
That was a good point you made tonight, I, I'm just saying, I looked at an area that's prime for development, and it could be commercial. That's our modest commercial that we can ask for. If the board's willing to ask for a more serious commercial, then, then let's do it.
I think it needs to be a more serious commercial, if that is the intent of the board, which is, we need a-
But sounds like Ron and Darlene agree with that, I don't know about what Frank will say about it, but-
We need a s- we know we need more of a commercial tax base, we cannot survive only approving residential, so why make that an option?
I'm not against that. Right, and it helps everybody along the way, even if people just have a house along this, right up above my township building.
Uh, that's the whole purpose behind this, is-
Okay, so we should look at four spots then.
Right.
No, so we're not, we're not doing it right now, we're just, uh, uh, we're supposed to have looked at these spots and, and analyzed them to see, that, that Dan made those color areas along, um, um, Racing Road, and, and our, one of our property owners up there, she pointed out something that she thought was an area, which is historic. Yeah, so, and then Dan corrected it on there.
Right.
It was a good suggestion that Nancy made.
But there, that's what I'm sa- we've talked about all these other areas, everybody's approved, the only, everybody's in agreement, from, at least I believe so, on that other stuff. The only thing that's new tonight is what you threw at us without anything tonight, and the first time I said, hey, that doesn't make sense to make it residential, it turned into a personal attack.
I, I look at it every day to try to find the areas that, that are gonna help us right off the bat, we need to help right off the bat, that's one of them. Let's just stop beating a, beating a dead horse.
All right, what are we moving on to then?
Don't be, don't take everything personal, Cindy, we're, we're trying to get something done here, he's bringing things up. Everything's personal with you. You know what? Let's just try and get this done, and quit. I don't know, I just-
Let's schedule a hearing on it, and the residents can actually have say in it on whether we change that commercial, we'll bring up all the ch- the changes in the hearing now, that's what it's, we're required to have a hearing before we make any changes.
You have to notice the planning commission first.
Right, right. We should start the process. Three of us agree, at least, the majority of us agree to start the process? Cindy shook her head? Ron shook his head? Darlene?
Yes. Start the process, let's get something done.
This workshop's adjourned, we'll work to schedule here.